It's 6:31, so I think I will call the meeting to order. Could I have a motion for adoption of remote participation?
Second.
Okay, let's do our roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
George Spalding Dover, yes.
Trudy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice Luca Stoya.
It's been awhile and we got our alphabetical order down, so congratulations everyone. I hope everyone has had a really nice summer. It is good to see you. We have several things that we want to go over today. So first of all, does anyone have anything that you'd like to talk about for the good of the organization? Michael, are you weighing in?
We all received a message by email today. Contesting and confronting our policy on masks and vaccines.
We did.
That's all I want to discuss later on.
Right, well, under the superintendent's report, we do have an opening, and I think there'd be an opportunity then. You know, opening for the new year, so I think that that would be the most appropriate place.
That sounds fine to me.
Okay. Okay, I, you know, I wanna, you know, I know, I just want to acknowledge how much work that the staff and faculty have been doing, getting ready for a new school year, so very much appreciated. If you, oh, and I'd like to introduce who just jumped on my screen somewhere. Glenn Kuchar, the executive director of the Mass Association of School Committees. Oh, there you are, hi Glenn. Thank you so much for joining us tonight, Glenn, of course, is also, we hired MASC as Glenn and MASC as our consultant for our search process, so we'll be hearing a lot more from Glenn later on in the meeting. In your packet, you have the new weighted vote chart that for each town, based on the rolling average, for your average of, a little more complicated than that. If, does anyone have any questions about the weighted vote chart? Keep it in your pocket for future meetings. Okay, let's move, oh, go ahead, Alice.
Wanted to thank you for having it so early in the year, it's great. It's really an on-time airline, and thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, let's move on to superintendent's report. Ed, it's all yours.
Sure. In your packet, we, there was a proposed district staffing. I want, I've spoken to the officers and to the finance committee at times about this for more than two years, actually. And what you have in there on page three is a functional org chart. And a functional org chart really just starts with the highest, am I losing you? It starts with the highest levels of responsibility, obviously, the school committee. And primarily, we're organized around specific skills and tasks that are interrelated.
Definitely over single.
Excuse me, Ed, could we ask everyone to put yourselves on mute if you're not talking? Thank you.
Yeah, I took care of that, but um, so, and we started working on this actually when Kevin Mahoney was still with us, because when we looked at other vocational technical schools in our district functionality, we were kind of in line with some things, out of line with others, and this brings us more into alignment. It really is, it's a cost-neutral reorganization. Also, the leadership team, folks that you see there in their job titles have worked with, we've all worked together with Jeff Lawrence over the last year or two about understanding each other a little bit better, understanding what our strengths are, how we can work together more closely, and this is a reflection of that. You'll see that the business manager has a dotted line to the school committee. Also, there's other dotted lines that just make sense in the way that we operate. There really no, so Rich Eikin, who's on, is the assistant superintendent of operations and facilities. Some of you may or may not know, Rich is a licensed business manager, a licensed superintendent, and has had experience in those areas as well, in Monty Tech and in another district. Amy, our assistant superintendent, has taken over a lot of the human resources component, not payroll and such, but the human resources, onboarding, licensing, background checks, hiring processes, and that sort of thing. Trying to see what, so I'm happy to answer any questions about the functional org chart. I had a few comments from some school committee members, which I incorporated, I think, all of those into this.
Ed, I do have one question, I realized, looking at this. I see the dotted line from the business manager to the school committee. Does that also go to the assistant superintendent?
Yes, it goes through the assistant superintendent. And me.
Of course. Other questions? Alice.
So I appreciate seeing this org chart, and I think it's great. I just know that the school committee has, one of its responsibilities involves approval of assistant superintendent positions, and I think that we've done that before in every case, and we should do it again. I think, I believe that's correct, that the school committee appoints assistant superintendents, and there's other pieces of the language in the law, I don't remember them, but we should do that. The school committee, part of our job is oversight, and we need to perform that function.
Yeah, in that spirit, I would appreciate a, I guess, a motion to approve the org chart, I guess, the functional org chart, which would in effect.
I think it's more complicated than that, I believe we have to look at the agreement, what we're offering the person, and so forth, and I think we've done that before. We did, certainly have done it before with other assistant superintendents. I'm not suggesting we disagree with you, because I think that the language says something like, shall not be unreasonably denied, or something like that, but it is a public meeting discussion about these type of level of job, which I believe is, the public is entitled to, and it's not a bad thing to follow those rules. We've done it before, every time.
Sure, so at the next meeting, we can have the job description and the contract for the school committee to review.
Okay, thank you. So Ed, are you still looking for a vote to approve this? I'm not sure that that, do you need a vote from the school committee to approve it?
Not, not, it's not a pressing issue, no. We're functioning in this way, so functioning pretty well, I might add.
Other questions from any school committee members? Okay, we'll follow up further at the next meeting, then.
Sure. So today was really the first day of school with everybody here. It was great to see, well, just to hear a full school again. Things seemed to go pretty well, we're gonna make some adjustments in lunch. All the kids were masked in accordance with the state mandate. We feel that there was really no, no problems with masking, kids seemed to adjust to it easier than some of the adults do, but um, I don't know what else to add about it, I mean, today was the first day. Buses were full, we're making some adjustments in some bus runs, because some kids were on the bus too long. We still have some hiring to complete. As I mentioned, Amy's been managing that process, and I think we're just about there. We had some very late summer resignations. And so we had, I think we have 16 or 17 new people with clowning, counting the technical assistants that we hired for each pathway, as well as some building subs, you know, full-time building subs, because that was, is always an issue for us. I think we have one outstanding position that we're, may or may not be able to fill, and that's in the logistics engineering space. Very difficult to find those folks these days, coming out of industry, or even coming from another school, but so we had, I've had some discussions when it comes to, there's a fact sheet that I'm gonna send around to all of you, I'll probably do it right after I quit talking, because I can't do two things at once lately, about the vaccines, and there's been some emails sent to me from parents who are, in my last communication, I said I'd be talking with teachers and school committee about mandated vaccinations for staff, which I've done, I have talked to our teachers, union leadership about it, as late as this afternoon. Because the win of being a fully vaccinated school is that you do not have to mask. The latest, we heard today again from the commissioner in a meeting with superintendents that there was a metric of 80%, and I don't think that's written in stone or has been decided, but when you look at the data around our school, from our nine-member towns in Belmont and Watertown, we're about 86% student vaccinated right now. I do not know what our vaccination level is from the staff point of view, but we did discuss a vaccination mandate for staff, and for those staff that didn't want to get vaccinated, they would be tested weekly. I applied to the Department of Ed, and we were approved to participate in their test and stay program, which they provide the testing materials. They'll also provide staffing. And we're primarily interested in that program, because if a student is a close contact and is tested at school, they can stay at school. They don't have to go home. And we didn't get involved in the pool testing, because we have kids from, and we still have kids from over 30 towns, but the pool testing was, just didn't make sense for us. But the test and stay program does. So I'm not asking the school committee for any kind of a vote on a vaccine mandate. I can tell you that Arlington, according to the information we have, Arlington Public Schools is requiring vaccines for all teachers and school staff, or submit to weekly testing, which is what I've been talking about with the teachers. I believe Lexington is talking about some sort of a vaccination mandate as well, Judy, but I don't know if the Lexington School Committee has voted on that yet.
Not that I'm aware, yes.
I believe Burlington has voted on a vaccination mandate for teachers and staff. Salem Public Schools, Cambridge Public Schools, Boston, and Chelmsford employees are required to show proof of vaccination, as well as in Medford. There are some states that are requiring it, actually some Oregon and Washington State are requiring teachers to get the vaccination or be terminated. Some pretty, but it's obvious that vaccination is the key for us to get back to some sense of normalcy, so. We're gonna do a little bit more conversation here with teachers, and and I'm listening to parents, mostly parents are probably like eight to one are in favor of vaccination mandates, but I don't want to get involved in the vaccination mandate for students. I'll let the state and the Department of Public Health do that. I don't think the Department of Ed is gonna weigh in on that. The governor certainly is promoting vaccination for everyone. And we've been very fortunate, you know, people have been pretty reasonable and understand what we're trying to do and are appreciative of it. So I, that's my update to school that started about 12 hours ago, and Jeff has his hand up, Pam.
Yes, Jeff.
Although, although on one hand, it's very discouraging that we're still talking about masking and all the, you know, kind of discussions and arguments we're happen, having now. I want to express the fact that despite that, I'm very grateful considering the discussions we're having now versus the ones we were having last year at this time.
Yeah.
So although this is not over, and that is not happy, I would, I really would like to focus on the fact that we're gonna be back in school with all the kids in a much, much, much better place than we were last year at this time. I'm trying to keep that in my mind as a, both a school committee member and as a teacher who's about to start the school year. Much happier than I was last year at this time, when it was a complete chaos and so many unknowns.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff, no, absolutely. And it's good to have that reminder that we are in a different place. And, you know, it's, and it is difficult discussions and difficult decisions, and I appreciate all the thought that has gone into it. Are there other questions or comments? Judy?
On a little bit of a different vein, but Dr. V, you did touch on it. School busing's made a lot of news of recent. I'm just curious, do we have a full complement of bus drivers?
We do, and Jack McCarthy, not Jack McCarthy, Mr. McCarthy, who runs the NRT Bus Services, was on WBZ last night. His company is short 300 bus drivers. You know, we've only had today as the first full run, and there were some late buses and some adjustments, but as far as we know, all of our buses are fully staffed. We may need to, we may need to split a run, because the kids are on the bus too long, which we found out this morning, but we're in pretty good shape.
Okay, thank you, that's good to, good to learn.
Any other questions or comments? Michael, did you have anything you wanted to raise?
Well, we all received an email from a couple of folks who did not identify themselves either as members of our community, as Minuteman parents, or any such further information. It was extensive, it was lengthy, it was filled with citations and website links and you know, legal references, and it is not what I am prepared to respond to individually. So I am asking our superintendent if the level of the school administration.
Oh, Michael, you caught, you cut out there for a little bit.
Sorry.
You said, I heard you say, I'm asking the superintendent, and then.
I am, I am asking the superintendent if the school administration plans to respond to it on our behalf, or if this is something which the school committee needs to address.
So the Minuteman fact sheet on vaccinations I just sent to all of you, that's gonna be our response. So if you want to take a look at that, and then give me some feedback individually, I don't think we need to escalate the response beyond the facts that we know, because we did do some, I guess I'd say, we did some of our own investigation of some of those resources that were being quoted in that correspondence, and we found them to be somewhat, well, we're just trying to put the facts out. I'm not gonna get into a a tit-for-tat about individual opinions out there in the world. The facts are the facts, and we're going with the science, and that's what that five-page memo I just sent you was about.
Okay, so what I would like to ask is, you know, after the meeting, if people have a chance to look through it, to certainly get back to the superintendent with any comments or questions. And then, of course, we do have another meeting in just a couple of weeks, where I'm sure some of the reopening issues will be coming up again, since guidance does be changing on a regular basis. Or at least, new guidance seems to be coming out on a regular basis, let me put it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, even today.
Yeah. Anything else?
I think it's Ford's turn.
Okay, yes, let us turn it to our subcommittee reports and Ford for the strategic planning subcommittee.
Thank you, Pam. You have introduced Glenn, and I appreciate that, but before I turn it over to Glenn, I want the school committee to know that we have been working on four documents that are in various stages of drafts. You have received one in your packet, I believe, which is a description and profile of the Minuteman District. Well, our process to go through the drafts are really, is Alice and Pam and Ford, we put together a draft, we then send it to Glenn for him to look at the draft and help us with it. And then it comes back to us, and then it goes to Dan O'Brien, who really cleans it up, makes it look pretty, which he's good at, and makes some edits, and then it's back to us. Now it's, we're, we took that document, and we're having the school committee, I want you to look at it, get back to me as soon as possible, like within the next couple of days, if you have any recommendations or changes. We also believe that any of our documents like this should probably also go to our staff, teaching members, teachers, so we will be talking to probably, at least as a start, the, those members that are gonna be on the screening committee, and if it needs to go further. The issue is, we need to have all these documents, and the others are gonna be a superintendent profile. You all, through two retreats, gave us information for the superintendent profile, which has been being put together, and we have a draft of that, that's in the early stages. An invitation to apply is another one, which is, goes out and invites people to go in to apply, and then there's the application. And all of these really need to be finalized within the next two weeks, if we're gonna stay on schedule, so. Whether we need a school, when they're gonna need a school committee for votes to approve them, if we need that, but you will have the opportunity to take a look at them and get back to us. So you do have the description and profile of the Minuteman District. The nice thing about the electronic world is, is we can provide links to various documents, and we can provide links to our website, and actually to some of our excellent promotional films, et cetera. So the applicant, when they, to make their decision, they're gonna get a lot of information to make their decision, whether they even want to apply, and whether they, they fit what we're looking at. So that process has been going on, and you'll hear more about that in the next couple of weeks. Before we go and talk about the screening committee, why don't I turn it over to Glenn and have Glenn give you a, really a high-level report on the process that we're gonna go through as a screening committee, and as a school committee, and as a school community, and then the schedule, so you can have an idea of where, where we are, what we're thinking about. So if it's all right, Pam, I'm gonna turn it over to Glenn.
Oh, that's fine, Glenn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're delighted to be back to work with Minuteman once again, and to see some familiar faces and some unfamiliar faces. What we're gonna be doing is taking all the material that is being worked on right now, distributing it to a pretty broad series of contacts, universities, districts, other professionals with whom we work, who are involved in training superintendents, recruiting superintendents, working with superintendents, including working pretty aggressively with MAVA and MARS, which is the regional schools organization, and the Superintendent's Association, to then use those materials to recruit the largest possible qualified pool of candidates to present to the search committee. In the meantime, once the search committee is appointed, we will work with them to give them an orientation, to explain the process of screening candidates, advising them on making sure that nobody crosses the line, that we follow the appropriate procedures, stick with the open meeting law and the public records law, and screen those candidates. In the meantime, to develop a real good series of thoughtful questions to pose to the candidates, to invite the candidates, hopefully for in-person interviews, although the world of Zoom makes it possible now to do remote interviews with people from a distance who might not otherwise want to incur the risk of travel expenses to come here from, from someplace else, just for a preliminary interview. In the meantime, we'll be doing some preliminary screening of the candidates ourselves, and working with the search committee on things like appropriate reference checking and the due diligence that goes with the candidates that you have. From that point, we will assist the search committee in preparing a recommendation to the school committee for candidates to interview publicly. I hope, and I've seen some of your documents, and we've advised Mr. Spalding and the members of the school committee with whom we've met to date about some practices that we think are helpful. I encourage the faculty and members of the school committee not to hesitate to be recruiting candidates, to speaking to their peers, possibly responding to questions that people will deliver to you, and to promote the district itself. Minuteman is a very special place. It's not only because you have a brand-new building, but you have a top-flight faculty, great leadership. It's a very good location to be, it's a great area in which to live. If you work at it, you can even find something that's affordable, if you need to relocate. So I think you have every expectation of getting a good pool of candidates to review. That's the 30,000-foot view, and Madam Chair, if people have any questions, or if they like to forward them to, to us through, through Mr. Spalding, or Mr. Luke, or you, or whoever else is, is working on the search. Be happy to.
Glenn, before, before we go to questions, Glenn, what is the timing, the schedule?
Well, the goal is to get the advertising or the virtual promotion out within the next couple of weeks, to close applications sometimes in mid-October, and to have the search process completed, in other words, search committee interviews and school committee interviews in time for an appointment before the winter holidays, so that you will have at least six months to orient, work with, collaborate with, and otherwise prepare the next superintendent. And otherwise prepare the next superintendent.
The other thing I want to add before questions is is that. I I know Glenn is calling it a search committee, but we are calling it a screening committee. We're strictly a screening committee and you are the the school committee is the appointment committee. But we're the screening committee during the screening process, which is Glenn said will go at least probably close to the first of the year. It's a confidential, it's a. Process, it is not a public process, it's not a process that's going to be be able to be seen. By people other than the screening committee. It's just not a public process because there are some individuals that may be applying. Or may be interested in the job and they haven't told their employer they are out looking. So we are stressing that that candidates. Should only communicate with the screening committee, they should not be communicating with anyone else. And they shouldn't even have their intentions known to anybody but the screening committee. When the screening screening committee releases hopefully two to four names to the school committee, that's when their names become public. I just wanted to make sure that everybody fully understands that. Sorry, Alice, I was kept on interrupting.
Yeah, we have Alice and then Jeff.
I was just going to say what Ford said, so.
Thanks, Alice.
Hi, Glenn.
Hey, Jeff.
I hope, I've already been assured of this, but I hope you fully appreciate. How radically different. The school, the administration and the school committee is from the last time we did this dance.
Yes. That that's been made very clear. I have seen it, I have spoken to it, I have witnessed it. It is a very different place.
Good.
I I will tell you, however, that. To my knowledge, to my experience, Minuteman never had a bad reputation. It always had a great reputation. Your reputation has probably never been as great as it is now. But you were working from a very strong point. So. Yes, it's no question, it's a very different place and. I think. It will result in probably a different process.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other questions? Ford, do you want to talk about the screening committee?
Let me turn to the screening committee and and we have two votes to make and what I'd like to do is reverse those votes. The first one is going to relate to the formation of the screening committee. Excuse me, we've worked very hard to define who the types of people that we should have on that screening committee. Trying to get as many constituents as possible, we worked hard to. Have every community in our district represented on that screening committee. As you've seen from the document that you received, we're recommending four school committee members. All four happen to have been chair of the Minuteman School Committee over the last decade plus. And three, and I could be wrong, it maybe is four, have participated in superintendent searches. In other locations, including Minuteman. So we think those are the four people that should be represented on this committee. They all also represent four different towns. We have four Minuteman teachers slash and administrators on the committee, one representing. The academics, one representing CTE, one representing special education. And one the from the administration. One of the people on the committee has also been a past officer of the Minuteman Teachers Association, excuse me. We have two current parents. On the committee. And they represent both one Lexington and Acton. And we have two representing district town officials on the committee. One representing workforce development. And as I said, all nine of our communities are on there. The members, I'm sorry, let me tap some more. You have a list of the the members, but I just want to read them off if I could. We're recommending George Bun, who's Executive Director of Metro Southwest Workforce Board, and he's very familiar with Minuteman. Jimmy Vitaldo, Minuteman parent from Lexington. Some of you may know him if you've overparked at a parking meter, you might get a notice from him that you owe some money. To the town and I think he has a senior at the school. Adam Chapindale, who's the Arlington Town Manager is. Is really delighted to be on the committee and any and he wanted to be on. And most of you probably know him, he's a very capable, well-respected individual. Alice DeLuca, you know, Nikki Devero, she is a math teacher. And representing the academic team. Christine Higgins is a another Minuteman parent from Acton. Amy Hutchings is works for with the sped department for the school. Pam Norris, you know, Carmen Reese, it's great to get Carmen back, moderator of Concord and I was. She was on our building committee at at one point and then she became a moderator. So I said, Pam, we have, I mean, Carmen, we have to check this out. So she checked with town council and. They said you can be on this committee, so I'm delighted to have her back and she's very fond of Minuteman. Myself, Al St. George, who is an electrical teacher representing CTE. I've worked very closely with him on the building project and he is a very dedicated worker. Jeff Stuland, you know, and Brian Tillsley, who is Minuteman Assistant Principal. Coach and he's the person in charge of security for the building. Among probably a lot of other things that he does. So that's our committee, it's very talented. It's 13 people, that's large in my opinion. But I think we had to go that large, so. I'm going to make a a motion and that is to. Approve the proposed members of the superintendent screening committee.
Do we have a second? Okay, any discussion?
With gratitude.
Excuse me, Judy, I'm sorry, I was talking over.
I'm sorry, no, you weren't, but with gratitude.
Thank you. Alice.
I just wanted to point out to make sure everybody's clear that. I would be representing in the Shobat District, which includes Bolton, Lancaster and Stowe. That's to keep the committee from being enormous.
Other comments or questions? If not.
My only comment is it is extremely strong committee. I've talked to everybody on the committee and. I I think it's a very strong committee that's dedicated to Minuteman, which is important.
If there's nothing else, let's go to a roll call vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Dave Ledoux Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes.
Great, thank you, everyone. Passes unanimously and I do want to thank Ford who reached out personally and had discussions with. Everyone who was considered, so really appreciate that work.
Pam, I think you actually should make the next.
Yes, the next, I was going to ask if there was anything else you wanted to add on the general.
We're anxious to get to work. We have a lot of work to do. I've told everybody that. There's a relatively short timetable. I've also told everybody, so you know that we expect attendance, 100% attendance at all our meetings. And we are going to offer them both in person and Zoom. We hope to have our first meeting within the next. Well, hopefully less than two weeks, I'm I'm going to, right after this meeting, I'm going to be sending out an email to everybody on the committee. And that first meeting will be a tour of the campus and the building. I think that's very important for people to be be able to. Understand that, followed by a meeting in person and offered to be Zoom. A business meeting afterwards, which Glenn is going to go into a much more detailed. A discussion of what our assignment, our job is, etc.
Right. Thank you, and I just want to add as an aside. Alice Ford and I had the pleasure of joining Glenn when Anthony gave a tour. And it was, I I really recommend just going back to the school, kind of getting reacquainted. Reacquainted to it was just really wonderful and. At some point when we feel like it might would make sense to do this for the school committee, I'd love to have Anthony give the school committee. A tour again, just as a way of getting reacquainted, because it was just so helpful to do it when we went through with Glenn. Um. So. Ford has been, as you all know, chairing the Strategic Planning Subcommittee. And the Strategic Planning Subcommittee will work will be kind of merging into. The screening committee. And I would like to entertain a motion to appoint Ford Spalding as chair of the Superintendent Screening Committee. Okay, any discussion?
You all can say anything you want, it won't bother me.
Yeah. I I just want to, well. Let's do the vote and then I just have a comment to make, so any any discussion? Okay, let's move to the vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Dave Ledoux Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes, a member of the public crying in the other room.
Has a good set of lungs, that's great. So congratulations, Ford.
Thank you.
Officially Chair of our Superintendent Screening Committee and I do want to thank Ford for. All the work that he has done in bringing us to this point and really kind of driving this process, so. You know, it's it's much appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe we are putting off the July minutes to the next meeting, is that correct? That is correct, so if that's the case, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Moved.
Okay, let's do our roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Dave Ledoux Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes.
Well, thank you, everyone, and just a reminder that our next meeting is Tuesday, September 14. And we do have a couple pieces of homework, you know, to review the school profile. And get comments to. And to review the fact sheet that the superintendent sent out and get any comments to. To the superintendent. So again, I appreciate everyone's participation and look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. Hi, everyone.